Ashley. Ashley.
Can any, does everybody hear me? Becky?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I've been trying to get Ashley's attention, but I don't know if she could hear me.
She has our mute.
Ashley, you're on mute.
Right now?
Nah.
Yeah, we can hear you now. Okay. Yep. Ashley, it looks like all of our commissioners are here.
Well, it's six o'clock, so you're welcome to, to begin.
Ashley?
Yes?
We can't hear you very well.
Yeah.
It's a little after six, so let's go ahead and get started. Ashley, are you, can you hear us? Okay, I think all of our commissioners are on. Is that correct, Ashley?
Yes.
Okay, well, I would like to call our meeting to order. This is the February 18th Planning Commission Meeting for the City of Red Bank. Commissioner Cannon is our secretary. Could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Browder.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Cannon is present. Commissioner Luther.
Here.
Commissioner Millard.
Present.
Commissioner Skonberg.
Here.
All right.
Thank you. Commissioner Millard, would you give the invocation for us and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for giving us this opportunity to come together, to work for our community, give us the knowledge and the guidance to help make the right decisions, be with us all. And please help us to make all the right choices with our decisions. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, if you look at our flag there on the screen and place your hand over your heart, I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States.
And to the republic.
Which stands.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty.
Justice.
For all.
For all. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we do have a full agenda, so we will try to keep our meeting moving along, is the consideration of the minutes. Ashley sent the revised version of the minutes. There were a few typographical errors. I had a couple of things that I told her about, and I think perhaps a couple of the other commissioners did too. So did y'all have a chance to look at that revised document that she sent, the minutes from our January 21st meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Were there any other corrections or additions?
No, I make a motion. We accept the minutes for.
Do you have a motion? Is there a second?
Back it.
Do you have a motion in a second? I believe because we're on Zoom, we have to have a roll call even for the minutes. So Ashley, would you call the roll? Ashley? Could you call the roll, please? I think she's having trouble with her audio.
Is that something that maybe Bill could do as a?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a backup microphone. It's not as good, but, um, okay, Commissioner Browder.
Yes.
Commissioner Cannon.
Yes.
Commissioner Luther.
Yes.
Commissioner Millard.
Yeah.
Commissioner Skonberg.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The minutes are approved and Ashley's got her backup mic, so. I was in a minor panic there that Ashley wouldn't be able to talk to us, and that would be a problem. Okay, um, let's get into our agenda, our new business. The first item, and let me just say in the beginning here, this is our meeting where we vote and make recommendations to the, to the Red Bank Commission, and we will ask our planner, Ashley, to explain each of these items to us, and then there is an opportunity for the applicant to speak, and then there will be an opportunity for any citizen who has a comment about that particular item on our agenda to speak, and Ashley will recognize those people who, who need to speak on behalf of the agenda items. So Ashley, you want to tell us about the final plat for Downer Estates at Strawberry Lane and Linda Circle. We did discuss this back at our work meeting, and there were a couple of items we needed in addition to having the applicant present.
Yes, and I'm pretty sure he's here tonight to discuss. And so this is a plat that has four lots along Linda Circle, one lot along Strawberry Lane. Strawberry Lane is a 20-foot wide private drive and has been in place for many decades as a private drive.
Okay.
The applicant was asked, he is going to add an additional note regarding the land disturbance permit.
What you want?
Disagree to that, and I have a topographic map here. It's not perfect, but, well, here, here's the plat that we've discussed, and I'll just switch to the topographic map really quickly here. But this is, these are the lot lines as they are now. I haven't had a chance to add the new lot lines, but this map here is the slope, so you can see the slope goes between moderately steep, so it's about 16% to steep, up to 30%. And some, it's very steep right next to the road, but that would be within the setback area. And then this is the, a regular topographic map. You can see that it's a hill that goes up to Linda Circle. If you drive on Linda Circle on the, on this inner part here, the slope continues up, and then it's been graded at the top of the hill there where those homes are. So going back to the plat, the plat does meet all the requirements of the subdivision regulations. So I recommend approval. It, there would be, I suppose, there would be difficulty when they go to build it. They'd have to have it engineered properly to build on that slope, but the Red Bank ordinances don't have any really stipulations as far as, and requirements as far as steep slopes, which we know is an issue we're working on, but because those aren't in place, I felt that this, this could be approved as it has been submitted with that additional note that Commissioner Cannon had requested, and I'm sure the applicant is here to answer any additional questions.
Do we have any questions from the commissioners first, or would you like to hear from the applicant first? Okay, let's hear from the applicant. Ashley, if you can.
Oh.
Turn, turn his mic on.
Can you see me?
Yes.
And if you would, please state your name for the record and also your address.
Yes, happy to. My name is Paul Downer, D-O-W-N-E-R. I own 200 Strawberry Lane, including these, this proposed, the land subdivision, and my address is 108 East Daytona Drive in Red Bank.
Okay, could you give us some information about, you know, why you are replating this, so to speak? And I know Ashley has conveyed some of the concerns that were brought up at the work session. If you could.
Sure.
Address, give us a little background since you weren't here at that, at our work session.
Yeah, so I'm renovating the main house at the end of the gravel drive for my family, my wife, Rachel, and our two girls, and our hope is to live there. And I'm interested in either building on these lots way down the road, or potentially selling them off for development. But I don't have.
And where, where is your house, the house that you're?
It's where I live, but the one we're talking about, is it 200 Strawberry Lane at the end of the gravel drive?
End of the gravel, okay. And that would be the only lot that's accessible by the gravel?
Yes.
Drive? The other lots would be accessible on the main road?
Yeah, that's right, on Linda Circle.
Okay. And Ashley, you said that he had, that this met all the requirements and that several of the things that were brought up at our meeting on our work session had been provided?
Yes, he, well, they will be adding the statement that Commissioner Cannon had requested about the land disturbance permit, and I provided the, these are the, they haven't provided the contours. The surveyor got that. I mean, there's just, it takes a little while, I guess, to add that in, so it could be.
He said he got behind today.
Yeah, it's just, but I, I provided the slope map and the topographic map as sort of a, just to be able to at least get you the information this evening. If you wanted to ask, request that the topos be added to the final recorded plat, that could be, you know, approval subject to that addition.
Actually, Ashley, I don't think that that needs to, to happen on a final plat. I mean, it just gets too busy, but I, I was referring to, you know, preliminary submittals. If we can make sure we see, you know, the preliminaries, those contours and stuff, but on the final plat, I don't, I don't see that being, being necessary. So, but, but what you, you've prepared for us tells the, the tale of what, what we needed to know. So thanks for pulling that today.
You're welcome, sure.
Yeah.
Do we have other questions from the commissioners at this point? Ashley, do we have any other comments from neighbors or is, is anyone else on that needs to be heard at this point?
I have not received any messages from anybody, and I don't see any, any raised hands or anything. So if anyone wants to speak on it, they can message me.
Okay, I did have one question for the applicant. Mr. Downer, do you, I know you said you plan to either develop these other lots in the future or sell them? I mean, do you have a timeline? And what's your timeline on your renovation of, of the existing house?
Yeah, great question. I, for various reasons, I've got to be done in three and a half months, so.
Okay.
I'm working, I'm working real hard to hit that deadline, so we're most the way there. And yeah, so three and a half months on my house, and then if I need to sell off a lot or a few of them for construction costs toward the end, that's honestly on the table for me, but I prefer to hold on to them if I can, and just preserve the woods there, actually.
So you'll be moving from East Daytona to this house? That's right. Okay, that's what I thought you said.
Yep, yep.
I had a question. Will you, will you be selling your house on East Daytona, or will you be leasing it out?
Well, we've raised our, our girls here, so for the short term, I think I'm going to be renting it to try to hold on to it. It's got a lot of sentimental connection for me, but I, I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions?
Mr. Downer, if, if you do develop these proposed subdivided lots, would you yourself be developing them, and if you did, would you, would they be for sale, or would you rent those also?
I honestly don't know. Um, I'm, this is my first time I've ever done something like this. I'm, I'm interested in the process, but I, I don't want to get in over my head. You know, I, I don't do that kind of thing. So I might hire someone to build a house or a few houses and sell them, or I might hold on to it. Ideally, it would be a good bit down the road because my girls love the woods. I just would like to, when I get my house done, I put it on a mortgage, I'd like it to be correctly, the property lines correctly aligned so that the mortgage is just on my house.
Hey, I had a question, Becky. I was wondering, you know, since there's not a rushed timeline on those additional pieces of property, I mean, would it be to the, to our benefit to wait and approve this once we get the steep slope ordinance figured out?
Um, I would think the steep slope ordinance would kick in, I mean, I don't think the plat, approving the plat would hinder the application of the steep slope ordinance at a later time, since he's not getting ready to do anything anyway. Now, I defer to Ashley on that, but that's what I would think.
Um, two, two points. First, I mean, he submitted an official plat. You would need to either deny it or approve it within 60 days, or else it automatically gets approved. So that, he submitted the plat in late January, so, or maybe middle of January. So just keep that in mind. Second, secondly, yeah, I mean, steep slope ordinance typically falls more to the design and build. Sometimes it does require larger lots on some of these steep slope areas, so you don't end up with too much grading. So that's, I, my fear is that he would get into this and then discover that it is not very buildable with these smaller lots and then have to replat it, but it would be something that would, you know, as they're engineering it, they might have to, I mean, that would come about once he starts doing the build, the build of the property, and, you know, I, I guess it's just at this point, not really for the planning commission to necessarily say that they can't engineer something since you don't have an ordinance in place to, you know, to prevent that at this time. But I mean, if down the road you had one in place, you could look at these and possibly take a closer look at the slope, but it usually would occur during the building phase, not the plating phase. I personally am not especially experienced with steep building on steep slopes, so that's sort of why I'm not entirely sure that it would make a difference as to the lot lines particularly, so.
Now, that info is helpful. Thank you.
Yeah. And I know that Mayor Berry has, you know, messaged me on the chat and I, asking to speak as well.
Okay, do we have other questions from the commissioners first? Okay, so Mayor Berry wants to speak now?
I believe so, yes.
Hey, everyone. As a resident of District One, South Red Bank, I'm actually familiar with the Strawberry Lane lot because my family was in town. We were actually, there was a lot for sale there this summer, and we drove down there and we walked around. We actually had a showing of that property and, and explored it both from the Linda Circle side of things and the Strawberry Lane side of things. That is a very, very steep lot, and I do have some concerns about that being developed long-term and whether that would be advisable, especially right down the street from me on Martin. On Glen Hill Drive, there's some recent development that's been on some pretty steep land that caused some considerable downhill backwash problems for the neighbors. So just definitely want to see this proceeded with caution for any future development on, on lots that steep, just my two cents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think though what Ashley's saying, I mean, this is, this plat itself, and our, our responsibility is to either approve the plat or deny the plat, and I think you have to have a reason to deny the plat if it meets all of the requirements, and this apparently, from what you said, meets the requirements. Now, in the future, like right now, he's working on a house and not planning to build on these lots anytime soon, but whenever that gets on his radar and he, he starts looking at that, then it'll have to have the proper engineering, and they, they will discover whether or not those lots are large enough or it needs to be replatted, I would think, in order to facilitate any construction.
Correct.
So, I mean, I, I think if you have met all the requirements of the plat, then we would need to approve it unless there is a reason to deny the plat. Is that, is that right, Ashley?
Yes, that's, yeah, for, for subdivision plats, I mean, drawing the lot lines, that is pretty much the way it goes. If you have, you have to have a pretty solid reason to deny it. And I also, I have somebody named Jason wanting to make a comment when you are ready for the next public comment.
Uh, yes, Jason, state your name for the record and your address, please.
Hi, I'm Jason Craven. I actually live at 327 Yorkshire Lane in Red Bank. I am also with the firm that helped Mr. Downer acquire Strawberry Lane with Keller Williams Realty. Just wanted to make public note to, to, for Mr. Downer, is that his property, where his home is, is at the bottom of the topography, so the steep slope or the runoff or downward sheer would directly affect him, and so his interest is in protecting and preserving kind of that stormwater runoff that would, would come to his and the location of his property. So there have been several developments in the North Shore and adjacent areas that do have to deal with the steep slope, and there, there are ways engineering-wise to kind of maintain the photography, the topography without having without having damage to the surrounding area. So again, yeah, that is an engineering question that would go through the building process, not necessarily in the plating of his home. So just want to make comment to that, that he has immense self-interest in preserving any downstream damage or, or issues from, from that runoff for where those lots are, are positioned. So.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Ashley, do we have anyone else?
I don't have anyone else.
Okay, commissioners, do I hear a motion to approve this plat?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'm sorry, let's get a second.
Yep.
Okay. I'm happy to second it.
Okay. And, and also I didn't know, you know, Bill on Tuesday made some comments about Lot Three with the sewer setback and, you know, some of the, some of the issues that may occur with that. I just didn't know if the property owner had been made aware of those potential issues with the sewer setback and being able to put a house in there or if that was really in our scope.
Yeah, I, I think, actually Nigel, I believe, you know, with those being as steep as they are, I mean, WWTA will, they'll be involved at the time that they, they decide to do any land disturbing. So, you know, they should catch that if, if they see that as an issue of encroachment or fill even. So if they have to fill, you know, you know, 20 feet of fill on top of that easement or whatever. They, WWTA should, should address that at, at that time. So.
Okay, I just wanted to bring it up just to make the property owner kind of aware of it.
Yeah, thanks.
Make a comment?
Sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I am aware of that and it's, it's definitely in my interest and my family's interest to make extra sure that those departments are super clued in on anything that gets built uphill. So, yes.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Ashley, would you call the roll, please?
For Commissioner Browder?
Yes.
Commissioner Cannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Luther?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah.
Commissioner Skonver?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to approve the final plat for Downer Estates has been approved. So we will move then to our next agenda item. This will be, again, a PUD plan, a final PUD plan approval for Hartman Hills, formerly 5,000 Oaks, I'm sorry, 5,000 acres at 5,005 Dayton Boulevard. And we had quite an extensive discussion about this, this PUD plan at our work meeting. But Ashley, if you would go over briefly what this involves. And I know there's been some minor changes and then I also have seen that we have the applicant here or on the screen. So we'll hear from the applicant as well.
Yes. To summarize the plan, it's 72 lots plus two community lots, but 62 single-family detached homes and 10 townhomes. That was one of the changes since Tuesday is they reduced the number to 10 as originally was in the plan. They have two roads and the variance has been approved to reduce the width to 22 feet. The variance approved, has been approved to increase the road grade at internal intersections. There's two community lots along Dayton Boulevard. There's going to be an access easement at the rear to provide a wooded trail, trail for residents of the development. The approved preliminary PUD in July 2020 was approved with variances. And the main change between that one and this one is the shifting of the road toward Dayton Boulevard. And it will, that will preserve trees at the rear of the property. Since the work session, they have provided me with documentation about their NPDES permit from TDEX, which is the TDEX General Construction Permit. The US Corps, US Army Corps of Engineers report of hydrological, hydrologic determination, which was the report on that. It was a stream in the preliminary plat that was determined not to be a pipeline by the Corps of Engineers and approval from the Red Bank Fire Chief. I provided this on our file sharing site. But I can, I'm happy to bring any of those files up on the screen if you'd like to see them now. It's been reduced to 10 townhomes. They've also provided an additional landscaping plan and a rendering of a typical home. And the final PUD plan, just so we're clear, that you will be approving today is going to include the site plan, the landscaping plan and the sewer and road profiles. And my recommendation is to approve the final PUD plan with minor changes from the preliminary PUD plan, subject to extending the 10-foot planted buffer along all R1 and R1A properties. And that's required by the zoning ordinance. So existing vegetation can be used for that buffer as well. And I will show you on the plat here exactly what I'm talking about. This is the site plan newly submitted. And if you look, this is the planted buffer. It ends here after taking a closer look at their landscaping plan. I noticed that this is going to be a grass, ended with grass. So they'll need to extend it at least until it gets to the area of existing vegetation that would meet the requirements of a type C planted buffer. So, and, and there's plenty of vegetation. They might have to do some supplemental plantings here in the rear as well. So I think approval subject to that would meet all the requirements and the PUD could be considered a minor change and rather than a major change requiring further review. And I'll go through their materials provided. This is the, this shows the preliminary PUD and the shift that we discussed in detail on Tuesday. This is the road profile for which they have the variance. And you can see the, the grade of the road as it goes to the, to the intersections. And their engineer, I believe, is on the line and would be able to answer questions about that. But that variance has already been approved. But of course, you're welcome to ask any questions. This is the second road profile. It's a much flatter road, the loop through the subdivision. This is the sewer profile. It met all the requirements that we have. This is the, the landscaping and planting plan. This is a rendering that they provided of a typical home. And this is the color version of their landscaping plan that they submitted to me today. And that's all the materials I have. But, and my recommendation, I'll scroll back to my recommendation for you to see it. And that is, over here, you can see the definition of a minor change. And because minor changes include shifting of proposed streets, I felt after some discussion with the city attorney that this would qualify as a minor change. The density and the use have not changed at all. That's, I'll turn it back to you, Becky or Commissioner Browder.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions, first of all, from the commission? And we can, I also asked the applicant to speak. But does anybody have any question about what Ashley has presented? And based on our discussion on Tuesday? Okay, I'll ask then the applicant, and I don't know who is going to speak on behalf of the project. If it's, I think I saw Jeff on and Rocky. I don't know who else is on here.
Yes, hello, good evening. My name's Jeff Smith.
State your name for the record and your address, please.
Certainly. I'm Jeff Smith. My address is 1635 Edgewood Circle, Chattanooga. I'm here representing the applicant, including Rise Partners, which is the company that is going to be developing the subdivision. Our address is 832 Georgia Avenue, Chattanooga. I think that I would like to start off with just a brief apology. I know that we had some transmission issues on Tuesday. I was trying to outrun some weather, trying to get to and from the Northeast in the car. And I apologize for any perceived slight, but, but it couldn't be avoided. And I think as part of that, my introduction was a little choppy. So I'd like to just take a second to let you know who we are. Rise Partners is a group of three principals. We combined have over 60 years of real estate investment and development experience across the southeastern United States. Combined over $1 billion of real estate investment and development. We've been working across the southeastern United States through our careers. It's a real pleasure to be working here locally in Red Bank on this project. Very much look forward to getting up in the morning and being able to literally kick dirt every morning while this, this development is underway. It's not, it's not something that we always get to do, but very much look forward to it here. I do have Rocky Chambers with Chattanooga Engineering here to, to help answer any questions. And I'd like to take, take this opportunity to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Smith, now, you, you will, were you on the property, the, the Rise Partners? Or, and then, as you, you had said at our other meeting, Green Tech would be the construction partner to actually build the homes. Is that correct?
That's correct. We will own, we already own the land. We will be the developer of the project. Green Tech will build the homes once we have building pads ready to turn over to them. But, but, but we are the owner and we'll, we'll continue to be the owner of the subdivision.
Will you, will you do the, will your, will your company do the infrastructure? Or is that Green Tech?
We will be doing the infrastructure. We'll be managing the stormwater protection program. We'll be monitoring that along with our, our contractor and civil engineer. And we'll be the point, I will personally be the point person for any residents' concerns, questions, including all 10 of the residents on Holiday Lane. I'm certainly going to make myself available as their point person for anything that may come up that they would like to discuss throughout the, the construction or after construction.
I do think that's very important to have a one point person and a phone number that's answered in case there are questions, when the grading gets started and the roads get, get in and that sort of thing.
Yes, ma'am. Actually, my plan is to go ahead and get a mailer out to all 10 and drop it off personally at their mailboxes. Hopefully I can catch them socially distanced in person, but, but at least give them the opportunity to, to see something from, from me and my company, letting them know who we are, if they can get in touch with me and how to do that.
Any questions from the commissioners for the applicant at this point?
I have a question.
Okay.
Have these always, I know, I just sort of found out at our meeting Tuesday that they were going to be rental houses. Was that always the intention?
It has always been a goal of ours to, to develop a premier, single-family, exclusively rental community. When we first got involved in this project with, with Green Tech, they, they originally intended on building a typical for-sale subdivision. The first thing that we did was insist that I had the opportunity to go meet with the city. So I made sure that I set up a meeting with Mr. Thornberry last year and sat down with him and explained very transparently that what our, what our goals were for the property. I gave him an opportunity to speak with anybody at the city that, you know, that, that he thought may be interested in. Gave him an opportunity to get back with me, with anybody that would want to meet with me, you know, with the city. So, you know, I apologize that you're, that you were late in the game to, to hear. But, but certainly never been anything that we did to try to hide or anything but 100% transparent in our, in our goals work.
Have you done a development like this in another part of the country? Or is this a newer concept that you're going to do here?
So that's a great question. There are a number of, of communities similar to this in Atlanta, Nashville. We don't have anything like this yet in Chattanooga. There's some for-rent communities that I don't want to get confused with what we're doing. There are some, for-rent communities that are being developed as more of a Beric style, I guess is what we call a type of, of, of development. Our home, our development is going to be single-family detached homes with the exception of possibility of 10, 10 townhomes in this, in this development. What we have gone and toured and seen in Atlanta and Nashville and, and have, have experienced other places. We aspire to do something that's like that. We drive through the neighborhood. We walk the houses. We actually have had one home builder that we spoke with in Nashville, very established, respected home builder that said that they actually had a subdivision that they had developed and had a for-rent community as part of it that is similar to this in the middle of their also-for-sale community. And it turned out that the for-sale part, because of some, some of the benefits of the uniform maintenance, the maintenance for living and some other things, and some of the, some of the residents in the for-sale section were actually kind of talking about being jealous of not being in the, in the for-rent part of the community. So no, while, while we've not done one and while there's not one, been one done yet in Chattanooga, it's not new, you know, in the southeastern United States. And we look forward to bringing something that we're going to be very proud of here to Red Bank.
Excuse me, Ashley, do we have any residents or citizens that want to comment on this PUD plan?
I don't have anybody currently. The only comment I've received, well, I believe Mayor, Mayor Bear, Barry wishes to speak. And, and I did receive a comment, just to read into the record, from Ms. Rosa Nguyen, requesting something we'd done about a tree behind her, her home. And I reached out to Mr. Smith yesterday and he did contact her. So hopefully that would be, it's a dead tree. I mean, they're not taking down a nice live tree. So she was concerned about it falling on her home. So I, I think that has been addressed.
I was able to, this is Jeff Smith, I was able to catch up with Ms. Nguyen and get an understanding of what her concern was. And I told her that we, we'd reach out and meet her over behind her house and make sure I know which tree it is. And we would certainly make sure that, that it was not an issue.
Thank you for doing that. Okay, Ashley, Mayor Barry, and then we'll move on to our vote.
I just want to state for the record that I've had a lot of citizens say that they're concerned about the non-ownership model. And they'd like to see more owner occupied houses in Red Bank and fewer renter occupied houses. So I'm, I'm reticent about this development model.
Becky, Commissioner Browder, if I could also, I'd just like to just note that, you know, as we move through the steep slope ordinance, that we also consider maybe some revisions to Section 303.11 on our street grades in our subdivision. on our street grades in our subdivision rates. Because I think the, you know, the 15% grade is high. And we need to investigate that a little more and look at potentially revising that section along with our steep slopes policies.
Okay. Ashley, if you make a note of that to add, when we, I mean, we will discuss that a little bit, but that may require, again, a special meeting to talk about the steep slopes. We want to do that the right way and investigate and review that. Okay, I think everyone has spoken. So what is before us is approval of the final PUD plan with the minor changes. So that would fall under the authority of the planning commission. And then there would be in this what our staff has recommended approval subject to extending the 10-foot planted buffer along the back of the property, the border there between the R1, which is the Holiday Lane properties, and then the R1A. So is there a motion, somebody like to make a motion to approve this final PUD plan for Hartman Hills?
I make a motion that we approve the final plan.
We have a motion by Commissioner Millard. Is there a second?
Reluctantly, I will second.
Okay, we do have a motion for Commissioner Millard and a second by Commissioner Cannon. So if you could call the roll, Ashley.
Commissioner Bratt?
Yes.
Commissioner Cannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Luther?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioners Gonberg?
Okay, the motion to approve the plan has been approved. And Mr. Smith, if you would just note the comments that we've had and just understand that this concept is new to Red Bank. And I agree with Mayor Barry that, you know, this has not been our goal, is to have more rental units in Red Bank. But I know that the way you've explained this and the design of the house and just this concept, I think is something that's coming. And so we just are going to rely on you to make this a quality project. And I do agree that there needs to be one point person with a good phone number that accepts voicemail messages and is not full all the time. Because we've had that happen with other developers. Rocky's laughing, I can see him. So we want to be sure that the citizens that are affected by this, live on Holiday Lane, have somebody they can talk to. And I appreciate your efforts to go door-to-door and see them and take the plan and somehow socially distance and let them see what's going on there. The more that the people who are affected by this can be, can understand it and be listened to, I think the more successful your project will be.
I would like to echo on something, Becky. As a realtor and selling real estate, I would definitely like to see more, I guess, permanent residents. But this is, this is already going on in this area, not in Red Bank, but it is in Apeson. And I have another developer that is getting ready to do something like this for 55 and up, for people that just, they just want to rent, they, you know, they're, you know, some of them aren't able, you know, to do it. So it is on the making, you know, it's been talked about a lot. So, you know, I guess it can turn out to be a good thing for a lot of people.
Okay, any other comments from the commissioners? We need to move to our next item. Thank you to the developer and anybody else that was represented there for your comments and for being here tonight. Okay, our next item is the special exceptions permit request for a triplex at 4 Trenton Street. We did talk about this extensively at the work session. And Ashley, if you can bring everybody up to date on that.
Sure. So at this address, the special exceptions permit was approved in 2019 for a duplex. The owner has now added land to the lot and wants to get a special exceptions permit for a triplex. They have proposed like a condominium-style arrangement. So it would be three separately-owned units, though it isn't, the lot is not large enough to subdivide. So it is technically a triplex and not townhomes, according to the ordinance. So they have proposed a site plan with six parking spaces and the cars will back onto the private driveway, which is directly next to the property. And this is the site plan that was submitted. And you can see that there's parking spaces here in the front and there's parking spaces here in the rear. The shared driveway does encroach on their property. And the applicant provided me with, provided with a survey that showed, the most recent survey shows it, it shows it encroaching on the property. And they, and it is, they have a recorded, and I couldn't get a copy of it because it's so old, a recorded agreement for the shared driveway. And I think the applicant could speak more to that as well. And the, so I recommended approval, but with a condition that cars can enter and exit the property without backing onto Trenton Street and that a stormwater plan is submitted with the, to the building inspector prior to issuing permits. Because I did hear from a neighboring property owner about concerns about the drainage off of this property. And adding all that parking will be adding some impervious surface. So I felt that they should make sure that the stormwater is going to be, not going to be going on someone else's property. So, and I know that the applicant is here on the line as well.
Okay, let's go ahead and hear from the applicant. If you would state your name and address for the record.
Tyler Smith, and 224 Hedgewood Drive. Can you guys hear me, I'm assuming?
Yes, sir.
Yes, and you, are you the, you're the applicant, but you're not the owner? Is that what you told us?
That's correct, yes. I'm the owner's representative.
All right.
As Ashley has stated, and I think we've been over this plenty of times, since this is the second time I'm coming for you. I think, just to jump to, I think, the comments from concerns that you guys had addressed in the work session. One being, I guess, overflow guest parking as an issue. I did provide, Ashley, with a email from the owner of one of the commercial properties on Dayton Boulevard, stating that overflow parking would be acceptable after 5 o'clock. And to help facilitate those conditions. Also, I think there was concerns about people parking on that driveway and maybe inhibiting access. And I think to take care of that, we were proposing to put up some signage and not allowing people to, you know, letting people know that it's not acceptable to park there or parking in, you know, the apartment building at the end of the driveway. So we've gone above and beyond in two different scenarios for the guest parking overflow. One, providing signage, and two, providing additional spots to proximity of the site. And then I think Commissioner Cannon spoke about the driveway, what the deed says. We did some pretty good extensive research on that and came up with, there is, the deed does state that there's a 12-foot access. If you can, but we already kind of knew that. It's already been recorded on the GIS. I think the road, as we provided with the new survey, shows the driveway actually being on the actual easement. But that driveway does encroach onto our property. With that being said, we also understand and, or understand that that is a shared driveway and want to keep it as existing as, just leave it and everyone use it. So we're not really proposing, really doing anything. I think everything as far as the driveway easement and the driveway accessibility is, we're just, you know, taking our little chunk out of it and being able to utilize it as everyone else is utilizing it. And I think, I'm open for questions.
Commissioners, do y'all have any questions of the applicant, who's the owner's representative here?
I wanted to make sure I was clear. I know Ashley had sent us some stuff on the, on the, one of the deeds and the shared drive. But was the, was the shared agreement on the deed for just, what was it, 8 Trenton Street? Or is the shared easement there for both 6 and 8, in both of their deeds? Or is it a separate agreement that identifies 6 and 8 using that shared easement?
I'm not sure exactly the numbers. As far as what our deed says is that there was a 12-foot easement, which is shown on the plan and that basically all adjacent properties could use that shared easement for accessibility.
Okay, yeah.
That's basically, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense. I don't, let's see, on the, on the stormwater concerns, I think, I think, you know, those, that can be addressed with some stormwater best management practices. So it can be addressed. And I think we should have that as a condition if we, if we agree, you know, to approve, to approve this one. But, but that's, that's all I had on this one.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Cannon. Other questions for Mr. Smith from the commissioners? Okay, Ashley, do we have other people who want to speak? Thought I saw, was it Mr. Garrison that is the owner of the adjacent property? Is he on?
I am here.
Okay, okay. Were you, were you going to speak or is there anybody else, Ashley?
Yes.
I can't, I just can't see everybody who's on, so.
Mr. Garrison's on, but I don't have any, anybody else who's contacted me to speak.
Okay. Mr. Garrison, you want to go ahead?
Yes, I can, I can shed a little bit of light with reference to the easement. I went back and looked when Mr. Becker, the current owner of that lot, found out. He bought it and didn't realize that the driveway encroached by about 10 feet over into his property. I did a little bit of research on that and found that several owners' deeds back had that 12-foot easement and, as mine does. So 6 Trenton does show that as a 12-foot easement. I believe, although I don't know, the owner of the property where 6 Trenton is and the owner of 4 Trenton were both one in the same. And I believe some decades ago, they are, they put that driveway in and didn't think anything about it because the gentleman owned both the pieces of property. My concerns with the property really involve containing egress and ingress into that property with reference to people visiting, my tenants, and also fire trucks and ambulances that go up there from time to time. So I would want to make sure that that remains clear and usable. The other concern that I have is I'm kind of tight on parking up on top of the hill. And so I would want to make sure that no one, that we found some way to keep people from just finding the course of least resistance and just parking up at the top of the hill into my parking lot and causing frustration for my tenants.
Okay, thank you. Ashley, I had a question. The special exceptions permit, does this go, go obviously to the planning commission? Does it also go to the city commission?
Yes, it's a resolution, so one meeting.
Okay, so what we would be doing tonight would be a recommendation to the Red Bank City Commission regarding the special exceptions permit request, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, we've heard then from the applicant and from the neighbor, neighboring property owner. And I know they've talked, they had said Tuesday that they were going to be sure that they have communicated and wanted to start a dialogue and, since they're neighbors. So that, I think they've done that. Okay, are we ready then to go ahead and take our vote? Does anybody have any other questions, comments, concerns? I'll have to say, I am concerned about the parking as well. But it looks like, you know, y'all have talked about it. And I think everyone is aware that the parking can be an issue if everyone does what they're supposed to do and visitors park offside. I guess, I guess it can work. I don't, I don't know. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the special exceptions permit request for a triplex at 4 Trenton Street?
I'll make a motion to approve with the condition for stormwater BMPs to ensure post-construction runoff is equal to or better than pre-construction runoff and that there is additional overflow parking, an agreement for additional. An agreement for additional overflow parking.
I'll second that, Bill.
Okay, so we have a motion from Commissioner Cannon, a second from Commissioner Skonberg. So could you please call the roll? Let, let me ask again, any other questions? Okay, Ashley, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Browder?
Yes.
Commissioner Cannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Luther?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah.
Commissioner Skonberg?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved and that recommendation will be sent on to the. Red Bank City Commission and they will have the final vote on this.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, our, our next item that we need to talk about is the backyard chicken ordinance. Now, I, I know Ashley's going to go over this with us. And we had some notes from our, our meeting. And I wanted to ask Ashley in, in terms of just the procedural part of this. Is the city expecting us to make the recommendation tonight? Or is this something that we can talk about and then? Perhaps move it to the next meeting or is there a, is there a time? Sensitive issue here or? I, I know, I, I, let me say, I know this has been looked at by the city manager and the city attorney, correct?
I believe so, yes.
I, I, I thought that's what you had told us. So anyway, what, what do you sense as the, is it, is this urgent? Is it something that? We need to try to, you know, accomplish tonight with, with our questions perhaps? Maybe we, you know, send on what concerns we have or?
I don't get the sense that it's especially urgent. I, I'd say if there's some consensus, you know, after a discussion, maybe go ahead and. Vote on it just to, to move on, but.
Okay.
I, I didn't get the sense that, that it was urgent, so.
All right. Okay, you want to give us an overview? Like I said, I know we talked about it and we had, really had a good discussion about it at our work meeting. But if you want to tell us, and then also, I think when you, you gave us some thoughts that. Came out of our work session that you sent to us as well.
Yes, so the proposed ordinance is to allow backyard chickens. In single-family lots that are, are one half acre or larger. With a minimum setback requirement of 25 feet from property lines, 50 feet from streams. They had a coop size requirement, two square feet per hen and maximum run size of 10 square feet. My recommendation, I, I defer to the planning commission and the board of commissioners as to as far as Red Bank's preferences. And values, it's. I think chickens is a personal preference type of thing as to far, as far as whether you want to live near chickens or. And keep chickens. I think it's. A personal preference. I do think they can be kept in a safe and sanitary way without any public safety concerns. But they could also. Be kept in a way that is, you know, could spread disease. So I, I think having the one-year trial to, to sort of. Take a look and evaluate and make sure that you don't have any. Kinks or problems that really need to be addressed before continuing with the program. I think that's a, a good idea if you want to go forward with the chicken ordinance. I, if it is adopted, I do recommend that you increase the run size requirements just based on what I researched about. You know, like USDA and agricultural recommendations. I don't, I'm not a. I don't own chickens, so I can't speak to that, but that's my understanding is that eight square feet for chicken is about. The size that you're going to want. And I also, after the meeting and, and discussing this with our planning director who has looked at chicken ordinances. And other places, he said, he really recommended specifying specific zones. Where it's allowed because the ordinance has written, it says, single-family homes. So I went through the different zones that allow single-family. And these are the number of lots that would accommodate chickens based on your. Lot size here and being a single-family use and it's mostly R1 and R1A, there's a few in R2. But oftentimes when you get a number that low. When you're looking at this kind of thing, you really don't want, that really means that it's not compatible with that zone. So it kind of would be. It'd be almost unfair for a few select people to be able to have chickens in that zone. And then none of the neighbors, they have to deal with the nudes. The downsides of having chickens, whereas they don't get the opportunity to have chickens even though they are in the same zone. So they get all the negative and all the positives. So I would not recommend. At this time, anything above R1A as far as allowing chickens for the, at least for this trial period that. Has been suggested.
Question, Ashley. Is there any reason why we couldn't in the future rescind the ordinance? If, if we find it to be. Not compatible with, with our original goals?
First of all, Mayor Barry, Barry just messaged, used the chat function to say that if you need more time to look at it, that would be fine. And secondly, it's, the way it's written is you're giving out permits for one year and after a year they expire. So. You, you can very easily rescind any ordinance you want, but the way to allow. This would not create chicken coops that are grandfathered in. This would create temporary chicken coops essentially that after a year. The permission expires, so. So yes, you can rescind that at any time and I think this, the way it's been proposed is a smart way to do it because. You're not going to have, you know, those chicken coops left over at the end of the year if it's really not working for Red Bank.
I, I guess one, one other thing that, that I just wanted to, to make note of and, and a concern. And it's probably, I mean, it's, there's, there's probably no lots. That are. Are not many that, that are half acre. Or more that abuts Stringer's branch. But seeing as, you know, Stringer's is, is listed on the 303D list. For TDEC as an impaired stream. And part of that is due to. EKOLI runoff and a lot of other things. I don't think it would be wise to, to allow the chicken coops. To be on properties that abut Stringer's branch. Just because, I mean, we're working to improve those numbers and, and I think that. It could potentially, could potentially make those numbers worse. So, and, and like I say, I don't know that there's very many lots that are. That large anyhow to, to make a big impact, but, but that was just a, a concern. That, you know, we're, we're working to improve. Those numbers on the stream and something like this could, could negatively impact that, that, that work, so.
Ashley, I had a question, you know, you were talking about. These permits would be good for a year and then if, if the city decided to. Like, like Commissioner Cannon said, rescind the ordinance or. Do something, you know, not have this, then you would have. I mean, would these, would people be told, I guess they need to be told that in the beginning. That, that, because I know Commissioner Luther had that same sort of question, like, okay, if somebody goes down and, you know, pays their. Initial fee and then gets the application, they go buy chickens and they go buy their coops and they get all set up. And then they need to know that, you know, if, if this is the way. It, it's, you know, written and suggested, they need to know on the front end that it, it, it may only be a year. Concerned about that, Commissioner Luther, you got a comment about that?
Yeah, I am too. And, you know, I would, I would assume that a lot of people that, that want to be doing this are probably, they have families and may have young children. And, you know, I've raised chickens my entire childhood and, you know, they're kind of like little pets. So, you know, there's also that social impact of, you know, all right, well, the city tells. You know, the family that they can't have their pet chickens anymore. And so, you know, I just don't want that to happen, you know, families, you know, they put forth a lot of interest and, you know, they build their pen. And I mean, it's, it's a good, it's a good learning experience. But I just don't, I, I don't think it would shine very, very well on the city to rescind that. And then go out and tell people that, okay, well now you, you're going to have to do something with these chickens. Well, what are you going to do with them? You take them to a McCamey or, you know, that, that impact. So that's kind of my concern with the one-year trial. But, you know, that's, that's just my thoughts.
I mean, I think those are very valid thoughts, actually.
Have we talked about like, I mean, how it will be assessed? Because I mean, I would assume, I mean, hopefully that we would have the community support behind it to get this passed. If, you know, if that's the way it goes. Thinking through if there's a valuation process of sorts that we could think through. I, I'm not sure that it would need to be rescinded at the end of the year unless something goes horribly wrong, right? Maybe, so maybe that's part of it is a, and, and if, and if there was that in there, I apologize. But some type of. It will readdress on this date if XYZ happens or.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this ordinance is modeled off to, modeled off of Signal Mountains ordinance. And they did it, you know, for a year and didn't have any issues and kept it, were able to keep it going.
Any idea on how many permits were issued in that year? I'm just, just trying to gauge interest.
I'm not sure. I mean, I know that Mayor Barry has talked with their mayor about this and then she might be able to provide more insight, but. But they, I mean, they, I mean, chickens don't tend to cause a lot of complaints. From what I've read, other than when you're in close quarters, small, small yards, multifamily situations. It could be more of an issue, but. Yeah, I, I don't know about there, but I mean, I'm sure we could inquire with Signal Mountain, see what they did. I would not, the one thing I would not recommend doing is putting in a clause to where, you know, if you get your chickens established within this year, you're grandfathered in. Even if they do rescind it because then you'll have a lot of unprepared people buying of chicken coops, you know, just trying to get their chicken permit.
Well, maybe that keeps the, you know, the, the pilot of it small in that way. Is that you're only going to get in this pilot year, a small percentage of the residents that would participate who have the means to do that. And then, you know, if that is successful and we see that that can happen on these smaller sites. Within these newer restrictions that we've set up, that maybe that then allows more people to come on if it gets, you know, adopted following the pilot year. So start small, go big, maybe.
Yeah, I think, yeah, good point.
And one thing that I would like to kind of define a little bit, little bit more is with the mobile chicken coops and maybe putting in some type of size. Size definitions there on the mobile chicken coops. Because right now we pretty much break it out as, you know, they're, they're, they're outside run and then they're inside chicken coop house. So I think maybe having, maybe addressing that because, I mean, honestly, that's a pretty. Effective way of having chickens and not having this, you know, big mass of chicken waste in one area of your house. You can move them around, they'd eat bugs, but. I think maybe putting a little bit more definition if we do decide to go into it on, on the mobile, mobile chicken coops and chicken tractors.
Thank you. I had Commissioner Browder. Would you like for me to make a motion, maybe that we table this for another? For a work session? I think we've already talked about maybe having a separate work session because we have other things to talk about. But, you know, I just think there's just a lot of stuff in the air that, you know, we could go back and forth for another hour. Talking about, you know, all the needs and concerns and, you know. Regulations and, you know.
Yeah, I, I, I think, Sonya, I think you're. I think you're exactly right. I think this needs a little more study and. I, I, I think from what we've heard from the mayor and also Ashley that certainly if we needed. You know, another meeting or two to come up with some good recommendations that, that we should be able to do that with no problem. I would like to hear, you know, what Ashley finds out, I think what Commissioner Luther asked about, wonder how many people. Actually applied in that first year on Signal Mountain. Signal Mountain's a little different than Red Bank, obviously, a little more rural area, but it would be a good comparison. So I, I would, I would actually, if you make that motion, would ask for a second that we. You know, continue to study this on our own and to. Come up with our concerns and then have a discussion next time and try to move this forward. Because remember, this is a recommendation to the Red Bank City Commission. And what's been done, I think is great. If the city managers looked at it and the city attorney, so there's a, in my mind, there's a draft of an ordinance. And then they've asked us for input and then we would make that recommendation to the commissioners and they would have their input for a final. You know. A, a, a final, really not a final draft, but actually, you know, final on the ordinance. So you want to go ahead and, and make that motion so we can get through a couple of other items on our agenda?
Sure, I make a motion that we table the, I guess, application for the chicken permit. To another date, maybe a special work session. To be with, do I need to have a time limit or do we need to say something like that within the next? Before our March meeting or within a couple of months? I mean, I know everything should sort of have a date to it.
Yeah, I think we could do it, I think we could do it before our March meeting. I don't, I don't.
You know, depending on our agenda, you know, what it looks like, we've had a lot of rezoning and requests, but, you know, we don't know what we'll have for next time. It may be that we could discuss it at our work session, our March work session and knock it out and, and make our recommendation like Commissioner Cannon was saying.
Okay.
So is there a second to that motion to?
A second.
For this to the next work session?
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Millard and a second by Commissioner Luther. But to defer this to our next work session and in the meantime, Ashley will get us a little more information. And perhaps it'll be enough time for us to study it on our own. Again, come up with our concerns and, you know, thoughts about it. So Ashley, could you please call the roll?
Since it's just tabling something, if you want to just do it by consent, if there's any objections.
Okay. That would be good. We could do that by consent. Anyone having an objection to tabling this until the next time? And then, and like I said, if there's no objection, then that's what we'll do. And Ashley will get us, she's going to do a little more research for, you know, Signal Mountain and. I don't know if, does East Ridge have a ordinance? I know the city of Chattanooga does, but. That's not really, you know, a good comparison probably. But maybe.
Any Cottage Dale or Apison or? Any Cottage Dale or Apison or?
College Dale, you're not, you cannot have chickens in College Dale. I know that one.
Okay, you know that one.
I, and Apison is county.
Yeah, that's the county, so.
Yeah.
And if, if you wanna have a lot of chickens, you can move to the county, cause there aren't any rules. The county doesn't have home rule government or, or anything, so you can just do what you want to. It's hard to get any codes enforcement or anything in the county. Okay, uh, all right, so we'll move that one, uh, to the next time. So, I think we can knock this next one out quickly. And then, uh, hoping we'll have time for our zoning amendments and then we may, we may need to, to stop and discuss how we wanna move forward on some of these other things for next time or, or if we want to think about a, a special, uh, meeting at some point. So, uh, Ashley, you wanna talk about this land use plan update, review of property sale and purchase requirements? We did, talk about this and I don't think we had any comments from last time.
Right, there's no comments from last time. Is this just adding to your land use plan, um, a requirement that the planning commission review the sale and acquisition of any real, real estate property. And that would, um, be only public, public property, so not anything related to sales tax delinquencies or anything like that. Um, and so you just review it and make sure it's in, in accordance with the land use plan. So, um, and this was, this, there's no applicant involved in this, so if you wanted to, um, adopt this by consent as well, that would be, um, a lot, a reasonable thing to do.
Questions of any of the commissioners? I think this is a good, I don't know what we call it, a revision or a good, uh, way to, um, have the plan more involved. Addition, thank you.
Good addition to our, our land use plan.
A, a very good, um, recommendation and addition, as Commissioner Cannon said, yeah.
And, and hopefully we can, we can add a few more over, over time as we, as we go, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, so is there a motion? We need a motion and a second on this and then we can do it by consent.
A motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Cannon and a second by Commissioner Millard. Okay, um, I don't think I can say all those in favor, because I'm, we're supposed to have a roll call vote, uh, but we can do it by consensus, so. Is there any objection? Is everybody okay with this? Okay, good. So, this is approved then, and as Commissioner Cannon said, a good new addition. Okay, now on number six is the zoning ordinance amendments and we went over several, got, um, I don't remember how far we got, Ashley. But if we can pick up from that and move forward, cause I think we understood.
Page sixty-three.
Yep, sixty-three, that's what I've got.
Hurry, okay, on our, on our packet.
Zero lot line residential.
Yeah, I think that's where we were. Okay, you wanna, you wanna take it from here?
Sure, and I'll just go through these and please stop if you have questions, um, or want to discuss. So, so RTZ and RC1, I'll just talk about those sort of both together. Their setback requirements are, within the, par- you know, a couple of paragraphs, they contradict each other and it's confusing. And, so there's been, one way the city has been, um, enforcing them for years and years and years and this clarifies it and sets it as, you know, enforcing it in that manner, to just, um, ten feet between single-family homes as the minimum. And, it allows the, the home, these are for the detached homes to be either centered on the lot, or to be, um, at the zero lot line. So, that's what that clarification is. I added a, an additional recommendation that's not in the version of the zoning ordinance that you've seen. But this is just from, what I've seen, um, as far as rezonings would, everybody wants to rezone to RTZ, which allows townhomes, but they wanna just build single-family detached homes. But the reason they want RTZ is because there's not that twenty-five foot buffer requirement. So, in my opinion, if you get rid of that requirement and reduce it to ten feet, which is, this would be the same as RTZ, then you make RC1 a more useful zoning designation and it would be truly a single-family detached, zone for zero lot line homes, um, that would be, instead of having, all of your RTZ zones are almost all, always conditional unless it's going to actually be townhomes to, um, you know, conditionally restrict it to single-family homes. So, I thought that would clean it up a little bit, um. I don't really think, especially when you're going from single-family zone to another single-family zone, there really needs to be a whole twenty-five feet, buffer required between those two. So, that, that's my recommendation, separate from anything that came from the city. But you, um, I mean, you're, feel, feel free to take that up or not. That's not, um, you won't hurt my feelings if you don't want to. Um, the next one is the neighborhood commercial. Um, at one point, they updated all the setback requirements in the C1 and C2, um, to match the design review standards and they, um, and they did not update it for C3. So, that was an error that we're correcting here. Um, the next one is something that the mayor has worked hard on with a, and I don't have his name on, off of my head, uh, but a resident who is, I believe, an arborist, who knows a lot about trees and they put together a tree list that focuses on native species. Um, and it would allow non-invasive species would have to get approval from Tim, um, directly. And, and then, any, they would also allow ornamental or non-native fruit in, fruiting trees or, you know, food-producing trees, um, in species would be allowed as long as they're non-invasive as well. But I think it's a good, I mean, I think it's good to focus on native species. It's, it's better for the environment. They, um, end up being hardier and there's all kinds of benefits to it. Um, so I recommend approval of that. I did, want to get, um, a little more review, perhaps from the gentleman, who knows, um, who put this list together for us about the three-gallon, eight-foot-tall installation requirement for trees. As I'm not sure if that is still appropriate for these species or not. It's just something that, um, I wanted to mention that needs to be reviewed further. Um, I took out the chapter of design review standards, um, and adopted it by reference, because we have a separate manual on that now. So, that's just an update to reflect to the more recent, um, design review standards, which we took, adopted last year, the new version. And that's it, that's, um, that takes us all the way through, the changes. But I know we covered a lot yesterday or Tuesday and today, so I'm happy to address any questions.
Okay, um, does anybody have any questions or you need further clarification on any of these? A lot of these are, um, are clarifications and just trying to, um, sort of clean up, some discrepancies or things that just don't match up in the ordinance. Um, does anybody have anything they wanna ask of Ashley about this? I mean, I think the zoning ordinance, it's kinda like the subdivision, um, regulations, it's, um, we're always gonna find things that don't match or, or, um, somehow, they seem contradictory, but they really aren't. But like, for example, they might use the word yard and it should be setback or whatever. So, we're gonna be finding these things as, time goes on and I think it's always good to make these changes when, when we can, and make them periodically so that we're not in a situation where, you know, we, we have, you know, thousands to make at one time or whatever. Now, Ashley, what do you need from us? Do you need approval of this? I know that some of these things are, you know, again, recommendations and there needs to be a little further research, but, do you need us to recommend this so it goes on to the city commission and in between there, some of this, a couple of things that need to be clarified will be, or how, how do you want this handled?
I would say that, I mean, i- it's totally your call if you would like to adopt the version that I've provided. I mean, I mean, recommend that version, you can. I would say, um, between now and March, we could, I could get everything reviewed by the attorney that needs to be reviewed, and, um, get a full ordinance written so that you would have that in front of you and could make a motion on that, particular ordinance. But of course, if there's any, comments that are, or areas of this that you want me to work on between now and then, um, I would need to know that, um.
Yeah, I mean, with the, uh, with the tree and shrub species, I mean, I think that three-gallon, eight-foot, installation requirements for the trees and shrubs might be something that, um, we might wanna look at. Uh, just because I know generally, especially with native plants, it's hard to get, sometimes, especially trees eight-foot tall, um.
Yeah, they're, um, the one ordinance, I, I've looked at several native species ordinances and, and you know, one of them was, um, more to the effect of and needs to be of a size that would, um, you know, withstand, you know, survive.
Lawn maintenance, you know, somebody's not gonna cut it over with a weed eater or something.
Right, we don't, we don't want seedling or. But, but if, if it's a species that doesn't grow as fast, it would be very difficult to purchase an eight-foot tall.
Right, you know.
I don't think that the gallon requirements came from the citizen who was assisting me. I think that might've come in, at a later stage when it was being adapted, cause he just gave species recommendations.
Ollie, um, is this Dawn, um?
Yeah, your neighbor.
He's, he's my neighbor. I can talk to, I can get some input from Dawn. He lives across the street from me.
Yeah, he doesn't, he didn't give that recommendation. That is what is already in there and I'm just trying to determine if we want to.
I just don't want it to, to restrict, you know, the work that he's done by having that, um, requirement, you know, in the background.
Yeah, and, and I, I think it, he, he may be able to suggest, uh, to us, you know, a specific caliber of tree, you know.
Look at it that way.
Yeah, from, from that perspective and, and then, you know, we could put that in, um, instead of the, three-gallon, eight-foot tall, so, um, so.
I would also just like to add that the new plant ordinance also adds some more prohibited plants to the invasive species list that were, not yet included in our existing list.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, that's good. So, Ashley, then why don't we, um, just ask you then to, do a bit more research on a couple of these things, you know, several of them, say the city attorney needs to, uh, be, you know, needs to review or, um, this, certainly the, the landscaping and the tree situation needs to be clarified. And then, if you get to the point where you can come up with, uh, a draft ordinance for us to review for next time, that would be great. And we could approve that. So, I, I think everybody understands what these recommendations are and, um.
And I'm personally, I'm, I'm good with the additions that, that she has, uh, recommended. Um, so like, like on the RC1 and the twenty-five foot buffer and all of that, so.
That, that's been really confusing, Bill, you know?
Yeah, so, so yeah, if, if, if everybody else is good with, with Ashley's, um, additions to, you know, the recommendations on each one of these, then, um, I guess the only one really is the, um, the screening, uh, requirement, um, with the, the updated tree and shrub list and all, so.
I will work on that and, and get that to you for next month. And if anybody thinks of something, um, you want me to address, um, that you saw, feel free to send it to me and I'll, I'll put that in, in my notes for next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, that, that's great. Okay, um, the next item is the steep slope ordinance discussion. That's gonna take a little while, so I don't know if we, want to move that to the next, uh, work session or, uh, I don't know if we're, I don't know if Ashley's really ready at this point to even discuss this. I know, she was doing some research and I know Bill had sent some things and.
Yeah, I, I think probably, uh, there, y- y- you know, both of these, the, um, the steep slope ordinance, uh, as well as the, uh, rental licensing ordinance that we're trying to work on, are both pretty involved. I mean, they, they really require, um, each one requires a lot of, um, a lot of research, a lot of, um, um, really digging into the material and everything. So, I don't know that we tackle them both, um, you know, at the same time, um, so.
I don't think we can. You're, I think you're exactly right. It's, you know, both need full attention and.
Yeah, so I, I guess it's just a matter of, of, of us deciding which one we, we feel we need to, uh, we need to address, um, the soonest. And then, my, my personal position is, is the, the rental licensing, um, um, ordinance, so.
I agree, especially given, um, what, you know, we've learned in the last couple of days, uh, and, and from the last meeting too, with the short-term rentals. I think for me, that's top priority.
Yeah, yeah, that.
Right, I do, uh, think, I might agree, um, that that would probably take a higher, um, position on our priority list. And then, then the steep slope ordinance, but, uh, I know we need to give Ashley some time to do some more research, uh, relative to the, you know, Tennessee state law and, and this, uh, short-term rentals and then the, the long-term rentals. Bill sent some things out for us to review. Uh, Tim has sent some things, um. I also think it would be good if we could have, uh, Tim, uh, in our discussion about this as well. I think that's important as the city manager, you know, he has to be the one to, uh, enforce this and, you know, through the, the codes people. So, I would like for us to, um, you know, have him involved as well. And then I'm hoping, y'all, that we can go back to having regular meetings and it's so much easier when you're in person, you know, to have, have discussions about things like this, so.
Yeah.
I, I mean, it.
And our training, our training sessions in person, that would be good if we could go do those again.
Yeah, except that we have to drive to Cleveland, you know? No, that's, that's always good.
True.
Yeah, but you, you get out of it, Bill. You end up going to some other training and count it, you know?
I have to do a lot of other training already.
I know, you're always training on something.
He just, he didn't wanna ride with me.
Didn't wanna ride with Sonia, cause Sonia, Sonia was our chauffeur. That's what it was. On a ride with, with Sonia.
I, I was just on training overload, that, that was all.
You are, I know you are. You're always, like I said, you're always training. Um, okay, well, why don't we do this? If, if y'all are okay, let's, um, let's see how, what our agenda looks like, uh, for March. Let's give Ashley some time. Let's, uh, plan on some kind of special meeting. hopefully in person, uh, to do, to deal with the short-term, uh, rental and long-term rental. Let's do our homework on what's been sent to us. I'll be in touch with Ashley and so what we could do is, and then, and she can talk with Tim. We can pick out a couple of dates and send out a little survey, one of those doodle survey things and see what works the best. And of course, if you know, if you have a meeting, we have to advertise it, so you have to back it up and do that. Because even if it's a, a work session, it's a public meeting, has to be advertised. So let's, let's, uh, not try to figure out all those logistics right now, but I'll, I'll have, I'll talk with Ashley. And I think the consensus is that we want to deal with the short-term and long-term rentals. And I agree with Commissioner Luther. I mean, this whole thing about the, the new subdivision, that's a, that's a totally different model than what
Yeah.
any of us have ever seen and, and Red Bank's ever seen, so.
Just a question, uh, it, did, did everybody get that copy that I had sent? Um, I don't, I, I don't think I've got the ability to put things in that share folder, but the, uh, the raising the bar.
Right, I got it.
I got it.
Twenty-eight pages or something?
Yes, okay. That's, um, that's a great document and I think a really good, um, a good place for us to, to start. And we can, we can all dig into that, um, independently, um, and, and kind of be ready to talk about some of that, uh, at our meeting, um, whenever we get it scheduled. Sooner the better for me, but.
Okay, I, I agree. So that'd be our homework to, um, read that document and some of the other things that have been sent and then that Ashley's put in that, that folder. Okay.
I would say one thing real quick, one, one, one good thing we've got in, in, in our, uh, to our advantage is that we're a, uh, home rule, so, uh, we've got some broader, um, powers to, um, you know, to, to work on ordinances like this. So, um, so hopefully when, um, the city attorney, um, looks at this, he'll be able to get, get back to us and, and let us know, uh, you know, exactly where our, our boundaries are on, on this stuff with the, the state, state law and, and also, but.
Right, good point. Yeah, okay, all right. So I think we, we sort of have our marching orders on that and know where we want to land. The unfinished business, uh, the revised plan for Freeman Family Subdivision, that has been withdrawn, I believe. Uh, is that correct, Ashley?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll wait for them to add that back at, at some other point. And then, um, we've talked about, uh, the short-term rentals. We know where we're going. And, uh, is there anything else? Again, the steep slope, we don't want that to disappear from the agenda. And then, uh, one thing I'd ask Ashley about, uh, that she was on, talked to Tim about. We had talked to Tim one back last year, year before, one of our meetings. We talked about screening of dumpsters and I know that if you, you know, it's in the design review to screen the dumpster. If something is renovated or is a new construction. But what I'd like to do is to have some, do some research on existing dumpsters that we could make the requirement that after a certain period of time, let's say you give somebody three years or whatever it is to screen their dumpster. I think in terms of beautification, in terms of, you know, the way our city looks, that that's one thing that is pretty easy to do. And if people were given ample opportunity to, to get that accomplished, that, you know, I, I mean, I hate for us to always say, well, this is grandfathered in. Well, at, at some point, the grandfathering needs to go away. And people need to conform and make their business look nice with the screening of the dumpster. So anyway, Ashley's got that on her, uh, her list. Add to her page after page after page of, of lists, but that's something I don't want us to forget, but that we talk about it, uh, in, in future meetings, if y'all have no objection to that.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, uh, anything else? Any other comments or, uh, trying to end this before two hours, so it's.
I just wanted to thank you, Becky. I think you're doing a marvelous job as chairperson and I, I, I appreciate all your extra time and effort that you put forth.
You're so nice to say that. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely. Thanks, Becky.
Thanks, Becky.
I appreciate it very much. I appreciate the confidence and I, I'm trying to keep us on track and to keep us, so we're not having two-hour meetings. It's, that's a lot. That's a big commitment for y'all.
It's not usually like this, uh, for the new commissioners now joining, Kay. It's, and it is so much more pleasant being in, in our, you know, um, public meetings.
So everything's more fun in person for sure. And this is important stuff. I think it's definitely all worth it. And again, you know, Ashley, thanks so much for all, I mean, this is a lot of work.
Thanks, Ashley.
A lot of work.
Definitely, Ashley. Oh, yeah.
I'm hoping that we will for March be able to meet in person. I think the, the commission is laying out that they would be going back in person. We'd still wear masks, we'd social distance, the whole deal. But I think we would be certainly in these discussion type meetings of, uh, of these ordinances or proposing. It just is more conducive to, and more fun. It, it just is Kate Rock. It's just, it's, everything's better in person.
Then we get back to the pizza.
We used to, they used to feed us too, which was. Okay, is there a motion to, to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting tonight.
All right. Bill, you on second there?
Uh, sure, a second.
Okay, all right. All those in favor, say aye. All right, thank y'all very much and we'll see you next time and we'll be in between.
Have a good night.
Take care.
Take care.
Bye-bye.